So thank you for taking the initiative and also thank you to the community for taking that on as well.
Well said, Sean. I think that this decision or this recognition about the donation will probably prompt other people to think about the work that is still needed to be done to fundraise about for the cost of replacing things like uniforms and equipment and signs and logos. And I hope to be able to provide more information at next at our next school committee meeting because I know that there are people looking for more information about that. So but thank you very much, Annie. You're welcome to stay with us for the evening, but you're certainly not required. We are very appreciative though, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me here. You recognize me, me too, I'm in here.
Great job. Okay, our next recognition is one that is almost impossible to thank the principals and the administrators who have put in so much work for us. There are just too many metaphors to use to describe the times that we're in, so I'm not even going to try to do that. But to not acknowledge the amount of work that has been done in order to get us to the place where we currently are would be a real disservice. The fall 2020 school reopening in Walpole has required many, many people to give up their summer vacations, including many weekends, to make plans and then to redo the plans, to develop two completely new methods of teaching, fully remote and hybrid, and to adapt away from some of the practices that they love the most and because there's a goal of prioritizing health and safety. Then, these same people had to patiently listen to equal numbers of people who feel that our decisions are too conservative or too risky. They've worked hard to recognize that before the doors of the schools opened for students, they needed to listen to so many members of our community who expressed concerns about their finances, about health and safety, about anxiety, and the overall development of children. September 14th was a monumental day of accomplishment for the Walpole Public Schools. And tonight, we want to thank the building administrators and central office staff who have taken teamwork to a new level in order to benefit our children. All of that said, the work this year will come at you in waves. Many teachers and staff members served on your reentry committees this summer, but most did not. And the return to our buildings is a true challenge for many of these staff members. They are dedicated people who have proven themselves to us, but now some of them are uncertain and scared. The same can be said for children coming back to school after six or more months. We're going to need to ask you all to take another deep breath, and if you can this weekend, because there are some extra attention that's needed right now to acclimate the place you all worked so hard to create for all of these people. There are not enough words in the dictionary to say thank you, so tonight, when many of you were expected to be here anyway, your school committee would like to offer you our sincere thanks on behalf of the Walpole School Walpole Community. You have allowed all of the students who chose to, to see some of their peers, to meet their teachers in person or remotely, and to engage in the real meaningful academic, social, and emotional learning. The tone is set from all of you, and it's kindness, it's support, it's humor, and resilience. Thank you very much for leading by example. And if you would just indulge me, I want to read the names of all of these people that we want to thank this evening. The principals and administrators include Julie Martin from the Danfeyne Preschool, David Barner from Old Post Road, Brian Bemis from Fisher, Brendan Dearborn from Boydun, Carrie Regerio from Elm Street, Ed Connor from Byrd Middle, Steve Morganwick from Johnson Middle, Steve Imbush from Walpole High School, Anne Arpin, our Director of Digital Learning, Jacenia Castro, the Metco Director, Maria Hall, our School Nutrition Director, Devon Clifford, the Extended Day Director, Lee Toby, Assistant Principal at Walpole High, Sean Powers, Assistant Principal at Walpole High, Connor Cashman, Assistant Principal at Johnson, John O'Leary, Assistant Principal at Byrd. And then there's the central office staff. Dr. Bridget Goff, our Superintendent, Bill Hahn, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. John Quealy, the Director of Student Services, Mike Frish, our School Business Administrator, Christina Pine, who is our Out of District Coordinator, Mark Howfried, the Business Office Manager, Jane Gothea from Accounts Payable, Jody Delpha from Payroll, Lori Sylvia from Human Resources, Kim Poirier, the Transportation Coordinator, Kathy Mortally, the Curriculum Data Analyst, Kathy Coleman, the Financial Analyst, Diana Liederman, and Janet Smith, Secretaries from the Special Education Department, Janet Cohen, the Out of District Procedural Assistant, and possibly our favorite, Mary Mortally, the Secretary from the Superintendent's Office. Very, very grateful to all of you, so thank you very much. I know I have a lot to say, but are there any other school committee members that want to chime in on the thanks here? Anne.
I mentioned this to Dr. Goff a couple of weeks ago, but I was having a conversation with some of my neighbors who are parents of school-aged children, and the conversation turned to school reopening, as it always does these days, and a neighbor of mine who grew up in a neighboring town said that she's never felt so lucky to live in Walpole as she does right now because of the tremendous job that all of our schools are doing for our students and our families. And I could not agree more with that sentiment. You know, working in a different school district, having family members who work in different school districts, and friends who work in school districts, while I certainly don't want to disparage any other district around us, in my opinion, Walpole has just blown everybody out of the water in terms of how you handled this crisis and how you prepared and how you welcomed our students back and made our parents feel confident that you are keeping our kids safe and giving them the absolute best education that you can. So from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you so much, and you are so appreciated.
Very, very well said, Karen. Okay, so the best thing we can do for these people is not keep them here all night, so we'll keep going. Okay, the next item is a Walpole High School Student Report, and if I'm not mistaken, we have Madison Field, who is our experienced member, and Grace Ryan, who is our new member. So welcome, girls, and the floor is all yours.
Yes, so hello, everyone. My name is Madison Field, and I am now a senior at Walpole High School. As we are coming to an end of a successful hybrid week, Cohort A will end this week remote while Cohort B will be in school. The teachers and staff at the high school are very open to feedback from the students to see what they can do to make their hybrid learning as normal as possible. It seems like the one-way hallways are going to plan, although it is tough to go all the way around the school to get to class. Students are cooperating and following the rules by keeping their masks on and sanitizing their areas as much as possible. Although the school changed from eight to four classes per semester and squeezing a full-year class into a semester seems extreme, the teachers are being very reasonable and making it manageable for the students. Wednesdays, all teachers are available for office hours and are open to questions where their students that they may have, which makes it super easy for a student to get extra help since they don't have the option Tuesday after anymore. This past Monday, sports have started, and all teams are trying their best to have a season. Although most sports rules have been changed, their coaches are trying their best to give everyone a chance to play, especially the seniors since it's their last year. Also, the Student Council is running their elections a little different this year. Instead of voting, anyone who is interested and meets the requirements will be able to be elected and can join SUCO. The council's purpose this year is to make the school as fun as possible, even though the big events like the dances, the pep rally, and the ability to meet with other councils around Massachusetts will not be able to happen. There are definitely some plans that are in the works right now and will be decided once we have a whole council. And finally, the Name Change Committee is meeting this Tuesday to start the process of renaming a new Walpole mascot. This year is definitely looking at different from years past, but the hard work everyone is putting in to make the students feel comfortable is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madison. It's really nice to have some student insight, so we do really appreciate that. And Grace, you're welcome to, you girls are welcome to stay with us for the rest of the evening, but it's your choice. We, you, if you want to participate, you would just raise your hand, and Dr. Goff would notice you. But thank you for being here, and it's your choice from here on in. Okay, the next item is new business, and Dr. Goff, I think the principals are going to start with their opening of school report?
Yes, the building principals will give a brief presentation to school committee relative to the opening of school, and I am going, we're going to start with Stephen Imbush of High School.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for having us. Thank you for recognizing the hard work that we've been doing at Walpole Schools this year. I would like to extend that recognition to our Fall Reopening Committee, who worked exceptionally hard throughout the summer months to put in place the procedures that allowed us to have such a successful opening. Needless to say, this is a very different year with many challenges for both students and staff. We have a new four-by-four semesterized schedule with longer periods. Add to this masks, air circulation, one-way traffic patterns, hand sanitizer, social distancing, lunch in classrooms, and on and on, and all this while teaching in a hybrid system with some students in the classroom and others logged in from home. I will tell you, however, that even with these challenges, the opening of school could not have been smoother. The students have been exceptional. They have stepped up and taken their responsibilities very seriously, and are very happy to be back at school. I could not be more proud of them. The following is just one sample of some feedback I received from a parent. Dear Mr. Imbush, thank you to you and the team for all the hard work that has made it a great first week transition to this hybrid teaching model. For what it's worth, my daughter really likes the new format both in and out of school. She is way more engaged this year, and she sounds truly happy at home when talking about school. She said the remote classroom experience is way better this year, and she said the teachers are way more familiar with technology to use for teaching. Have a great weekend. Our staff really are working harder than ever. Teaching in a hybrid system is so much more difficult than teaching with everyone in school or with everyone remote. I'd put our staff in the category of frontline workers. None of them signed up for teaching this way, but they recognize the importance of having students back in school, and they have risen to the occasion to provide the support the students need. I'd also like to thank our custodial staff and V T W who worked tirelessly to get the school ready for the students and staff. New cleaning protocol, one-way signage, hand sanitizer station, rearranging of student desks, removal of furniture to make room for students sitting six feet apart, takes an exceptional amount of time and energy, but again, the staff rose to the occasion and made it all happen. A few days before school started, we invited our incoming freshmen to attend our annual freshman orientation. This was carried out over two days. This has always been a very positive experience for the freshmen, and this year was no exception. We were very happy to meet the class of 2024. I want to reiterate my thanks to the school committee for your support of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative for every student two years ago. Now, none of us foresaw this pandemic coming. The fact that we had this program in place meant that we started many steps ahead of where we could have been. If this situation has a silver lining, it is that our students and staff have taken a huge technological leap ahead, which I believe will benefit them well after this pandemic is over. I'd like to remind the community about a back-to-school night on Thursday, October 1st. This will take place virtually, but with the same important information as other years. We have a freshman parent orientation from 6:30 to 7:00, and we invite all our parents to join us from 7:00 to 8:15. More details will go out on the notes tomorrow. We are looking forward to a fabulous school year at Walpole High, where every student can find personal success and can fully enjoy their high school experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Before I move on to the next principals and principals, Phil Hahn just wants to give a brief overview and talk a little bit about the hybrid model. I know that we receive some questions, so please go ahead and speak about that, and then we'll move on to the rest of the principals.
Thanks, Dr. Goff. While our principals review the start of the year, Dr. Goff and I thought this would be a good time to review student, and in many cases for our younger students, caregiver expectations for our hybrid learning model. We know that we have sent many emails and discusses at length in prior meetings, but for good reason, we know there are still questions about the hybrid model, specifically with what is expected of students on cohort days when they are remote or not at school. At the middle school and high school, students are still required to log in and connect through Google Meets at the start of each period, and at the elementary level, students check in with their classroom teacher approximately four times a day spread out throughout that day. During this time at the elementary, middle, or high schools, the classroom teacher is communicating directly with the students at home and the students present in their classroom. Teachers utilize this time to take attendance, review expectations, answer questions, clarify assignments, or provide mini lessons. The length of this time varies depending on what the teacher is looking to accomplish. Some have inquired why we don't require teachers to teach fully in person and stream students at home for the length of the period. This is a fair question, and we know that some districts have pursued this strategy. To start, some teachers are utilizing this time to livestream to students at home for the majority of the period. And over time, as teachers and students become more familiar with the schedule and technology, we imagine even more teachers will engage using this pedagogy as well. However, we do believe that teachers can assign meaningful asynchronous work that can be completed by students offline. In fact, we know that well-designed asynchronous instruction allows for deeper cognitive participation, where students have an opportunity for increased reflection and ability to process information independently. Even when students are in person, effective pedagogy ensures we provide students the opportunity to work independently and reflect on their learning. This summer, we assured parents that remote learning was look very different from last spring. Last spring, students were fully remote, and we had limited expectations around synchronous learning. This fall, we are not fully remote. This is a hybrid model that requires our teachers to plan for the students in front of them and the students at home. Our teachers have done an excellent job so far, but we know we need to continue to reflect and grow in the way that we provide instruction in this hybrid model. Master teachers are constantly reviewing their craft, and most importantly, they're willing to take risks and go outside their comfort zone to plan and create lessons. During a school year, we celebrate these risks and even lessons that don't go as planned. This year, not every lesson plan will be perfect, but our teachers are dedicated to our students' learning and growth, and I am confident over time this model of learning will continue to improve. Six months ago, I didn't even know what synchronous and asynchronous learning was. Now it is part of my daily vocabulary, but these terms and instructional strategies can still be confusing, especially to those outside of education. Asynchronous instruction and learning may not be livestreaming, but it is still meaningful and should be engaging for all students. I encourage families to communicate with teachers about their remote days and share what is working well and provide encouraging feedback to what may not be effective to your learner at home. This is just the start of a new journey, but I'm grateful that Walpole teachers are embracing the ride. Thank you to those parents and caregivers who have shared so many positive experiences in areas where we can continue to improve as we move forward through this hybrid model. Thank you, Dr. Goff.
I'd like to move on to the middle schools. So, Mr. Carter, Mr. Mortimer, who would like to go first?
I'll go first, Dr. Goff. We're actually going to do our presentation together, so we'll just bounce and back and forth between each other. But we would like to start by saying thank you so much to the members of the school committee for their strong support that we've had starting last March and continuing until today. We know that you always have our backs, and that the work that we do, we feel appreciated and lucky to have you as our school committee members. We're ecstatic to welcome back our students to school this year. It's been a long time. Schools were empty, hollow, and now they're starting to feel a little more full. I mean, even though it's a hybrid half-and-half model, we're happy to see those spaces, or at least from here out for most of the day on each half of the week. This year, for middle school, we've welcomed back approximately 400 students, with almost half-and-half coming in Cohort A, Cohort B. We have some students who are coming every day depending on their particular needs, and then we do have some students who have enrolled in the RLNS program. But for all the parents out there, one of the things that Mr. Mortimer and I want you to know, that even a student who has signed up for the RLNS program is still considered to be a Walpole middle school student. We include them every day in homeroom. We include them, invite them to various assemblies that we have, and we want them to know that even though they're learning fully remotely, that they're still part of the middle school community at Johnson and at Byrd. Steve, you want to take over from here?
Sure. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out where I was taking with that one right now, so just really quickly, Johnson's Walpole, we're happy to welcome back 426 students this year, and again, we have a little bit of a smaller enrollment because we have 54 students currently in the remote program, but we are trying to engage with them as best we can and keep them involved in our process as well.
So some of the transitions that we did for grade six this year, both schools had sneak peek during the first, it was actually the second week of school for teachers, but not for students. Each school had two one-hour sessions, with a session one for each cohort. It was really great to see the sixth graders come in. They had a chance to learn about their schedules. They had a chance to see some of the building. They had a chance to see some of the students who would be in their learning pod, which we'll talk about more in a few minutes. And at both events, we had nearly 90% attendance at both schools, so it was really great to know that the parents and family felt safe and happy to send their children to school to help them get a little bit of a head start before school started, because we know that a lot of people are anxious, a lot of people, you know, have some worries, but being able to allay some of those fears during that, during those sneak peek days was really a good thing for us. We also gave it a little bit of a test run at both schools to see what was working and what didn't, especially entry into school, walking around the school with all the different signs and the directions and dismissal that, you know, tends to change daily, not at just our schools, but we know at all schools. Again, like Mr. Immish said about the Chromebooks, thank you again for the initiatives that you have started for us a few years ago, and one of the things we've done so far is we swapped out all the students who had Chromebooks from grade five as sixth graders now. They got brand-new Chromebooks that they started with at the beginning of school because we gave those out during the weeks of the sneak peek. And currently, grade seven is going to get new Chromebooks, but we're waiting the shipment for those to come in, and they should be coming in fairly soon. So that way, our entire grade six and grade seven students at both middle schools will have brand-new Chromebooks to make sure that they can stay connected both in class and outside at home. We've had a lot of changes in terms of our logistics in the building. We wanted to kind of cover those really quickly, share with what we're doing. And both middle school staffs and our advisory committee worked tirelessly over the summer, and we have done a really great job of trying to be consistent across the two middle schools so that changes in schedules, changes in procedures are mirrored in both schools and so that both communities are aligned. The first major change was that we have taken students and we have assigned them to learning pods or what ended up being homerooms for them. And the learning pods have been carefully and deliberately scheduled so that the students can stay within that same learning pod for the entire day and have less exposure to other students and other groups throughout the course of their school time. Those learning pods will only leave their homeroom classroom when they are going to lunch or to related arts classes. And as opposed to our standard procedures where the students move between classes, the students are now staying put in their classroom, and the teachers are moving between classes, again minimizing the flow of students through the hallways in between classes. And when the students are moving to lunch or to related arts classes, they are now being escorted by teachers just because we know adolescent learners, well, if you give them a couple of seconds in the hallway, they will find some way to climb on top of one another and bounce off of each other. So the teachers are there to help us maintain social distancing in the hallway as we're traveling through home spaces. And everybody's been really, really great about pitching in and being flexible and really abiding by all the rules, regulations, and procedures that we put into place. We do have one-way traffic in our hallways as well. I find that I am like doing double the steps that I used to do, which is completely good for my figure, so that'll be a positive at the end of all this. And the middle schools are just a little bit different than the other schools. We are using our cafeterias for our lunch service. We have enough space in those areas to be able to have individualized student desks. All of our students are assigned to a desk that they will sit at each day during lunch and be over there at the cafeteria and be, again, collective as a group, but still separated with enough space in to be safe for one another. Those are some of the major changes that we had in terms of our logistics. Some of the other changes that we have this year are a number of new staff at both JMS and DMS. We have a new Metco tutor. We welcomed, I don't know, Jacenia's going to talk about her tonight, but Ms. Cummings Watanabe, who is our Metco tutor at Byrd. We have hired a new nurse, a new Spanish teacher, a new math connections coach, along with another math teacher, and we have a couple of long-term subs who are working with us this year, one in guidance and one in E L A, as well as three new E S Ps.
At Johnson, we have a new main office secretary. We have two new MSNs, a new art teacher, new music teacher, new school psychologist, two E S Ps, and a long-term E L L teacher that we're very thankful to have for the middle schools.
We did want to remind, well, not remind, but let all the parents know that we too are having a virtual open house, both schools, same night, September 30th, which is a little less than a week from tonight, where we'll set up various schedules so that parents can log on and meet the teachers in here, put some names to faces, and be able to hear some of the things that they'll be doing in schools this year. Do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Yeah, listen, we just want to make sure, we want to share that the students are back and they've been wonderful. They have been very willing to build upon with all of our new procedures. They have been engaged. It's been really nice to have them back, and, you know, all the kind of the concerns that we had about whether the students would be able to follow the new expectations have all been allayed, and the students have been great, so it's nice to have them.
Right, and even to the point where, you know, they'll tell each other, you know, when we're coming in from outside, "Hey, don't forget to put your mask on," you know, so they're really great in terms of, you know, making sure that everybody stays safe and taking care of one another. One of the things that I meant to do at the start was now sort of thanking the school committee, sorry about that, Steve, was to give our, just show our gratitude to all of our hard-working custodial staff who did tremendous work to get the school ready, the schools ready. They were just instrumental in making it possible for our building to open. We want to publicly thank our assistant principals, John O'Leary and Connor Cashman over Johnson, because they have been invaluable to Steve and to me in terms of helping make the decisions to try and make sure that we have a school that's safe and sound for everybody.
Yeah, for two guys at the end of their first year of admin, they've done yeoman's work, and yeah, they're pretty impressive. So thank you, John and Connor. We also want to thank-
They're crushing it, I guess.
They are.
They're really-
Yeah. We want to also thank the rest of our staffs for being so flexible and responsible. We want to also thank the rest of our staffs for being so flexible and responsive. It's one thing to be planning throughout the summer to have these things in place, but then to have, you know, the people kind of walking in day-to-day and not being critical or not complaining, but rather being collaborative and sharing ideas and trying to point out where it's very, areas where you can improve things. It's been a really nice process to have them back. And we really do appreciate the eight days that we had in terms of being able to work with the staff before the students arrived. That was very key in us being able to get ourselves prepared. And I also want to thank the middle school advisory committee for helping us plan a reopening that happens every week throughout the summer. And they were right up to the last minute, asking great questions and making great suggestions and are still asking to continue that work. So thank you to all those committee members as well.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Let's move on to our elementary principals and also our preschool director.
Good evening, I'm David Bahner, principal at OPR. It's also been an excellent start to a memorable learning year at the elementary level. Across the district and the four elementary schools, we welcomed 1,468 hybrid and 232 remote students in kindergarten through grade five. Boydin with 310, hybrid 45 remote, Elm 369 hybrid, 67 remote, Fisher 395 hybrid, 62 remote, and OPR with 397 hybrid, 58 remote. Long before our September 14th opening date, the planning and careful thought began with the district elementary reopening group, creating the recommendations and safety protocols and effective teaching strategies. Each elementary school then formed opening groups customizing procedures and practices. During the portion of the eight days prior to welcoming students, staff participated in trainings to learn our new or revised procedures. Classrooms were prepared by removing furniture to provide adequate spacing and student assignments were reconfigured to decrease class sizes. Halls have been marked with arrows for traffic flow, signs reminding that face mask wearing, social distancing and hand washing have been posted. Sanitizer dispensers have been installed. Every classroom either has fans or an air purifier supplementing the air circulation. Restroom usage has been defined and cohort recess and lunch practices have been shared. Arrival and dismissal procedures that incorporated social distancing have been created. Both grade one to five hybrid students and all full remote students have been equipped with Chromebooks, with hybrid kindergarten scheduled to receive them soon. The eight days also provided staff opportunities to collaborate, plan instructional approaches to meet the needs of the students while in-person and remote. With all this well-established, we welcomed students confident that school would be safe and teaching and learning would be paramount. When the students arrived, it was clear that the staff were thrilled to feel the energy and the positivity back in our schools. On that first day and the days since, each class begins with morning meetings, often featuring the remote students on the screen in the front of the class, talking and sharing with the teacher and with the students in the classroom. They've quickly adapted to the changes and are intent on learning. Classroom communities are being built and relationships developed. Most importantly, our students are comfortable and happy to be at school. There's been a strong set emphasis for students on establishing a sense of belonging to their classroom and our school community. During this first two weeks, we've also had our first fire drills, thank you to the Walpole Fire Department, and rolled out free breakfast and lunch for all students. Each school has had, held their first virtual PACT meeting, welcoming new and returning parents and sharing opportunities and activities for parents to partner with educators. Today, together, we'll have a great year. We're excited to embark on this journey of rigorous learning with all of our elementary students. In closing, it's with great appreciation that we would like to recognize our teachers and staff. Everyone has worked tirelessly and collaboratively, keeping in mind that our students are the priority. The teachers and staff have demonstrated flexibility, willingness to help in any way and a commitment to safety, teaching and learning. School is possible only because of our phenomenal staff. Thank you, and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Rosiero, if you'd like.
Thank you, good evening. So like most summers, our custodial staff were hard at work cleaning classrooms, cafeterias, auditoriums, stripping and waxing floors and pre-preparing for reopening of schools. This year was a little different because like Principal Barnor already mentioned, in addition, our custodial staff was busy storing furniture and working with principals so that our students could be safe distanced and in a safe learning environment. That was no small feat, trying to store all of that extra furniture within our buildings. They also worked with Mike Frischa to make sure they were trained on cleaning and sanitizing procedures given the guidance of Desi and the CDC. And we are very appreciative of their efforts and want to thank them for all their hard work. We also want to thank Donnie Anderson and the building maintenance team for all their hard work maintaining our buildings and for the work at OPR this summer, remodeling their office, adding new floors, painting countertops, glass enclosure to provide a secure reception area, and updated heating and AC. Currently, our buildings are only accessible by staff and students. There have been many modifications to cleaning and maintenance, including all the PPE. We have fans in each of the classrooms, increasing air circulation, air purifiers in rooms where there are not windows, plexiglass shielding and signage to make sure that we provide the visuals so that our students can have reminders on the new protocols and procedures to keep them safe throughout the day. We also purchased items to maximize our outside spaces, which include tents, picnic tables and playground equipment. We are thankful for the support and the enhancements of our facilities in order to educate our students most effectively during these times. Thank you, and I'd like to introduce Principal Dearborn.
Hello, everyone. So one of the unique things about our, many of the unique things happening in school year, but one of the things was starting the school year with eight days prior to our students coming in. And I think when we heard that from the state, at first we were kind of excited and then trying to figure out what was going to be in those eight days. But we quickly were able to come up with many vital things to start the school year. So the beginning of the school year, you know, Dr. Goff opened it with virtual meeting with our whole entire district, and that led back into some building meetings. And at that time, our school nurses presented to all of our staff about the safety procedures and some of the COVID regulations, which was a really key piece to our staff. Our custodians also went over a cleaning presentation and was able to provide the staff with how we're going to be sanitizing the building throughout the day and then on the days they're not here. And it also gave us time to go over with our reopening committees about procedures and ask questions and meet in small groups about what this new school year and procedures are going to look like. So it was a crucial time for us. We also felt like it was really important to build that time around our procedures, but also around curriculum development leading into this school year. So we did use our reading consultant Claire Lanigan, who met with every grade level at the elementary level to kick off reading workshop, which we're going to be, you know, starting this school year. We, Jan Finley and the literacy coordinator, met with each grade level to go over foundations and word studies. And our math coach, Alan Kelly, also found time to meet with each grade level to go over the scope and sequence. So we felt like it was important that really have a focus on all of our new procedures, but we didn't want to lose sight of the new curriculum stuff that we're going to move forward in the education of students. Also, one of the things that we really made sure we gave time was the staff and teachers to have time to plan for themselves. They had to create these new classrooms, they had to create, get a hold on some of the guidelines and what this is going to look like for our hybrid learners as well as our in-person learners. So there was many times we'd walk throughout the building and they'd be eating, socially distancing, small groups or over the computer to figure out what this looks like. I think the time was vital, and I think some of our success in our openings had to do with all the work that a whole entire staff in all of our schools put in within those eight days. So I think we utilized them very, very well. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian Bemis, the principal of Fisher.
Thank you, buddy, and good evening, everyone. And the Wednesday afternoons that we have this year as we go through the hybrid model is really the silver lining in this year, where we provide our teachers with a unique opportunity to continue that collaboration that Brandon mentioned, that to share best practices for this hybrid learning model. The occasional Wednesdays will be used to continue the Lucy Calkins reading workshop professional development as well as math professional development and building-based meetings. That being said, we also have a side of a very important initiative that we committed to last spring. Wednesday afternoons will also be a time for administrators and representatives from each school to participate in cultural proficiency training. This summer, administrators participate in professional development led by courageous conversations. Courageous conversations provide us with strategies to effectively engage and sustain dialogue with people of all races to transform beliefs, behaviors and overcome our institutional biases that prevent all people, especially people of color, from reaching their full potential. To further ensure our students and families receive the most equitable, inclusive and representative learning experience throughout this school year, we will be working with KW Diversity Incorporated. KW Diversity will collaborate with administrators and building representatives from all schools. The objectives of this training will be to gain a clear understanding of the definition and theory of cultural proficiency, be exposed to proven strategies to counter the negative effects of modern forms of racism and implicit bias, and also gain an understanding of what it means to be a culturally proficient leader. Administrators and staff involved in this training will then lead groups of teachers and staff at each school to share what they've learned to enhance the culture and climate of their learning communities. This professional development will not be a one-time event. The conversations will continue and evolve in the years to come. We look forward to keeping our school community updated on the progress throughout the year via newsletters, PACT meetings and school council meetings. In closing, on behalf of the elementary principals, I'd like to thank the school committee, our administrative colleagues, central office staff, for all their continued support as we begin this new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, Julie Martin.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. We were very excited to welcome 65 preschoolers in person every day, so we are different from the rest of the district. Very excited, three and four-year-olds, and we're off to a great start. And again, it couldn't have been done without the advisory committees that, the meetup of staff at the preschool who really helped guide our opening plans, taking into all of the regulations with Desi, early childhood and the CDC. As the rest of my colleagues mentioned, the custodial staff was amazing as far as, you know, clearing our rooms, creating space. We have, you know, dots in the hallways that kids can stand on. And the teachers have really, really took those eight days to prepare their classrooms and prepare, you know, for the arrival of our students in a way that allows kids to have preschool, but in a way that's safe for them. So we have, you know, kids are eating in the classrooms, they're wearing masks all the time. It's going, it's going well, it's a work in progress for some for sure, but they, it's amazing. They're three and four years old and they're doing it all day. And we're just, we're so proud of them. We have partitions up in the classrooms while they're eating. All this, every service is being sanitized. Every, every item that is touched throughout the day is being sanitized and cleaned every day. So it's really a tribute to the teachers and our ESPs and just their dedication in making all of this work. There are the air filters in each classroom. There's hand sanitizing stations at both adult and three and four-year-old level throughout the school. Our playground is divided into cohorts, so we're keeping each singular classroom separated from one another. And so far, it's just been, it's been amazing. It's been an amazing nine days. The kids are thrilled to be there, they are running into the building each day with their masks on. And just as an example, during the eight days, we had our meet and greet with parents and we told, we explained to the parents that they would have to stay outside because we're limiting the number of adults coming into a building. But we said if the child wanted to go into their classroom with their teacher to see their classroom, they could. And some of these kids, they're three years old, they've never been to school before, they've never really been away from their families, and every single child went into the building that day to see their classroom with their teacher. So we can't thank enough the incredible work of our staff, every single one of them, and the creativity that they've shown and the flexibility that they've shown and the collaboration. And I have to thank the nurse, all the nurses across the district. They've been instrumental, the collaboration with Elm Street School has been tremendous and the custodial staff. This year, we, in addition, you know, all of our students have started receiving their special education services, which is wonderful because we know how important that is for kids these, at this age. And where we started a very, a program, a new special education program at the preschool, the instructional program, which is an individualized program, highly individual program for students, that's very targeted instruction. So we're very proud to have that starting this year as well. But everyone is just, across the district and speaking for everyone is just in it to do, you know, we're doing what's best for kids and it shows. And I can't tell you how much, when we're walking kids out at the end of the day, the thank yous and how the parents will remark to the teachers or to us, just, oh, they're just so happy to be back, they're so happy to be with their friends, they love coming to school, they don't care about the masks. So when that's said to me, I responded to parents and just said, you know what, it makes all of the hard work, all of the hours, every minute of it worth it. It's been, it's been great. So we look forward to continuing to keep you up to date and informed with how things are going at the preschool, but we're off to a great start and we couldn't be happier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. That rounds out the principals.
Wonderful. And then questions or comments that people want to make at this point? Jen, sorry.
Not to shout really loud.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions in terms of just making sure that lessons are consistent across grade levels. And, you know, across the district, I know the middle schools spoke a little bit about that. But, you know, how are we going about making sure that, you know, some teachers are obviously better with technology than others. This is a tough area that everybody has to learn. So how are we making sure that there's consistency across grade levels?
All right, I'm going to repeat that question, just in case I was ready to repeat that. Jen had just, she had mentioned that, you know, that, you know, ensuring that lessons are consistent across grade levels, so that the middle schools had mentioned that. And just wanted someone to answer, you know, how are we going to, you know, make sure that we go about to make sure that, especially with the technology and that learning curve, that we are consistent across the grade levels?
I don't want to speak for the principals. I think the elementary principals, I think it was Principal Dearborn and Principal Bemis spoke about a big part of our professional development at the start of the year and throughout, on all Wednesdays, is going to be committing to collaboration for best practice. I think that, I think that our teachers collaborate and communicate a great deal, but, you know, sometimes you might have a teacher who takes a lead on a piece of technology and then that grade level team or those people that are, that collaborate or work together, you know, then adopt and utilize that technology. So consistency and standards is something that we're always in great communication about. And pedagogical practices, I think, you know, also something that is shared in the best practices, excuse me, in the PLC meetings when discussions of best practices occur. Jen, just so you know, we couldn't hear it exactly, so if I didn't, if I was incomplete in the answer of any principles, as Mike please do, I'm afraid that I might have missed some of the things that you said.
Go ahead, sorry. I was going to say, one of the silver linings, again, of going kind of virtual is that we're able to have our departments meeting across the middle school. So on Wednesday afternoons, the departments are able to get together and collaborate from Bird and Johnson, you know, remotely. And so that's, that's something that started during closure last spring and has continued on, which is one of the ways that we're helping to make sure that we have consistency across the schools, at least at the middle school level.
And one of the things I failed, one of the things I failed to mention was our digital learning coaches throughout those eight days, we're, we're working tremendously with all our staff and I'm going to guess that's at all levels, putting on small workshops, meeting with small grade levels, and that's been happening on the first two Wednesdays and will continue to happen. They're also, they've been essential into getting so much of the technology up and running, troubleshooting with students, troubleshooting with staff members as well as in classrooms to, at least at the elementary level, to maximize that in-person learning time. Also to, you know, Jen, I was mentioning about how students are going to develop some of those skills, and that's some of the stuff that needs to be taught and practiced throughout the school day. So when they go home, they're able to remember how to start the video or troubleshoot themselves if an adult was not there. So much of that instruction is going to be happening on a continuous basis throughout all of our classrooms by our staff, by our teachers and our digital learning.
Keep going.
Sure.
In terms of content and online programming, who is reviewing the programs that we're assigning on remote days? I mean, there's obviously some platforms that are more engaging than others. And I just wasn't clear, you know, how the district makes a decision on what platforms we're going to use. I know we've had some shifting views on Freckle over the years. So as things are, you know, working or not working, how are we incorporating changes into the curriculum and making sure that someone's looking at the content to see what's working, what's not?
You want me to repeat that? Yes, okay. So in terms of the content and the online programming, like the platforms used in terms of the curriculum and embedding that, you know, how are we making sure that we're, one, we're incorporating those changes, following it up to make sure that they're vetted, to make sure that those programs are working in order to best meet the needs of our students?
Yeah, there's many different online platforms.
Because there's many different online platforms.
As a parent, I wouldn't necessarily know.
I wish Ann Arben was here and perhaps this might be a question that Ann can present to her next school committee meeting.
She's going to present.
Because she, she has a, she has a pretty comprehensive vetting process that started last year before this all came into place, and something we, you know, we discuss at length at most of our leadership meetings. But I'm afraid I'll do a disservice trying to explain kind of the vetting process and stuff that she takes working with the DLC and our team.
So she's going to present that. And we'll make sure she, because that's her presentation. Sure.
Keep going. So my last question's not really about curriculum, but are we ensuring that children are getting stretch breaks in addition to mask breaks? We're asking a lot of students to sit in one place for long stretches of time. And, you know, I've gotten some feedback that kids are having trouble staying put and, you know, may just need to stretch and stand for a portion of time.
Are we ensuring that our children are getting stretch breaks and mask breaks throughout the day?
I can speak for the middle school at Byrd to say that most of the teachers take a break every period if they have students with them. And one of the things they do in the break is they get up and they go outside, and they just take a couple laps around the school. The kids will have to wear their masks. Sometimes they'll have snack at that time. To the point where today the secretaries were not annoyed, I would say, but they were just surprised at the number of times the doorbell has been ringing over the past, you know, week and a half to let people back into the building during those periods. So, yes.
Would you rather new middle school, if you have a card reader system for the doorway, just putting it out there now?
Elementary mask breaks and stretch breaks.
Very similar to what Ed just described, the doorbell is ringing constantly for classes to come back inside. I'll be outside watching recess, and there'll be many classrooms walking by, socially distanced, mask breaks, everybody kind of saying hello to each other. It's a nice, it's a nice situation. But everyone's utilizing the tent areas, the playground, they're getting out, the weather's been very cooperative. And plenty of mask breaks, I would say. Every time there's a natural transition between, between lessons, there's a mask break, there's a movement break, and for the little ones, I see them out quite often.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for the principals who just presented? Okay? I'm sorry.
Three minutes here. Just a couple of quick side related comments. I think, number one, thank you. This was very helpful and informative. I would suggest perhaps in a couple of months, we do this again, just to kind of where we are with, you know, this kind of new way of learning in Walpole. And just secondly, I guess, a question would be, is there anything that we as a school committee should be advocating for? Anything that is still needed as we look at, you know, other types of things? Is there anything we can do? And then just thirdly, kind of piggybacking off of Jen's question, later in the agenda under old business, one, we're talking about augmenting our mask policy. So if you could just maybe just do a little deeper dive very quickly about how the mask policy is going currently? And are you seeing most students having the kind of full masks that we're all wearing now? And we'll, just while we all have you here, before we vote on it later after you leave the Zoom, do you think it'll be a great kind of shift to get everyone to that? And are you seeing a lot of gaiters and bandanas currently?
Okay. Would you like me to repeat that, everybody? Okay. So Buckley says first of all, thank you.
Number two, just, just to, it would be beneficial in a couple of months to that, for all of you to reconvene, just to talk about how it's going, what's going well, some of the changes that you've implemented. Third, anything the school committee can do to help support you and anything that you might need in the future? I know Mike's probably chomping at the bit as this administrator over there, but for the principals, what do you need, or is there anything that you would like the school committee to advocate for on your behalf? And then finally, before you all leave, they're going to be voting on the mask policy. A request from the WTA to make an amendment to the mask policy. So Mr. Buckley was curious about how that's going currently in terms of masks, what you're seeing, any thoughts about the change in the mask policy? But more importantly, like, do you see students, you know, wearing gaiters and bandanas versus the masks that I'm wearing now?
I would say at the elementary level, I think we, I think we've all talked about how impressed we are that the students are wearing masks. And I think coming into this, never kind of experienced, experiencing this before. The question was, how can a five-year-old keep their mask on, or how can an eight-year-old keep their mask on? And they're tremendous at it. Sometimes they need some reminders, or, you know, at Boyd and Leaf, we have at every one of our doors, if a student enters, we have student masks in case a student forgets. We hand them a quick mask. They put it on, not they go to the classroom. You know, there are mask breaks, so that helps. But I think the students have done an amazing job, and I think that's a credit to a lot of the families as well. Leading into this is kind of explaining some of the procedures. So we can't thank the families enough for the hard work they did and proactive work they did to help us with that. I think we are seeing some gaiters. I think we're seeing predominantly more masks than gaiters and bandanas. So, and I think they're easier for students to kind of manage the masks than the gaiters. But we're also working with individual students that may or may not have reasons why they're struggling with that mask. It may be respiratory issue, or it may be just their inability yet to master that mask. So we're working on individual bases on how to support those students.
One of the, one of the things that we were keeping in mind, like Principal Dearborn said, is this history implications to some of our students with the gaiters. And a lot of our elementary-age students in their sports outside of school, gaiters have been allowed all through the summer. So they're very used to that. So then shifting, I think we need to give some, give some time. And we're thrilled that they are wearing gaiters, and gaiters are getting better every day. Some of them that are coming in, we've seen our two-fly and even have filters in them. So I really think it depends on the quality of the gaiter. One of the things we are so grateful the parents are supporting us and also sending in multiple masks for their children in their bags so that if they're getting wet from talking or if it's just they need a change of the way it feels, because sometimes it hurts behind their ears, having that ability to change out their masks during the day has been really helpful as well.
At the middle schools, I would, at least at Johnson, we're not seeing any bandanas at all. And the vast majority of students are wearing masks and not gaiters. I do think that we have a handful of students who, who just feel much more comfortable with gaiters. And I think that, you know, I'm concerned about eliminating the possibility for them to have that option, if that's what they need.
I would say it's the same at Byrd. Most of the students are wearing masks, have not seen one bandana, and some gaiters, not that many. But most of the kids are wearing masks and doing a great job with it.
And again, just to repeat, if there's anything the school committee can do to advocate on your behalf or to support you, to please let them know.
Okay, anybody else for questions or comments? I would just ask, at this point, now that we've been in for two weeks, I would love to see us do surveys for the staff and for the parents. I think it's, it's going to be something that we're going to need to do every couple of months anyway. And I think it will give us some insight into the people who are struggling the most. And sometimes people just need to be heard. It's not even that they need to have anything done. But I would like to, you know, this is more to you, Bridget, than to the principals. But I think that right from the start, it would just be a sort of a sign of good faith to say, okay, you know, you've just gotten started. What do we need to hear from you? And I was looking on, Panorama has some canned surveys that we could use. So it's not even that you would have to, have to create it. But I think that that would be helpful to all of us. And maybe, maybe survey students too, but I think it's two different sets of things that, that happen. I talked to a parent right before this meeting, and she, she just needed to be listened to. And, you know, she understands what we're in the middle of, but she definitely had some questions. And I think it would be good to get that two-way conversation going. Anything else? Okay, then that gets us to Dr. Quealy, who is going to give us some information about special ed.
Yes. You're on, Dr. Quealy.
Thank you. Before I start, I just wanted to thank the committee for their time, word at the top. And I think it's much appreciated to know how you feel about, about how we're doing. So I did want to thank the committee for that. And then before I get into detail, I also want to acknowledge the special ed staff. A lot has been asked of them in a short amount of time, so I do want to acknowledge their hard work. We do have a number of staff members who've been pressed into new or for different roles without a lot of time to prepare for those roles, and they've really responded really well. So I do want to acknowledge the staff before moving forward. So to get into some detail, you know, before launching service this year, I just want to give you a little bit of context as to, you know, how that, how that went about this year. And there were really three variables that special ed staff needed to get set before they could get service underway. The first of these were student variables, and more specifically, how many students with IEPs were choosing a remote model, how many students with IEPs were choosing a hybrid model, and really what the service delivery grids in those two different models look like. That variable, at this point, I think has pretty much set itself, and we're moving forward with that. The second was building variables, you know, what the master schedules look like in each of the buildings. And in some, it wasn't a huge, huge change, but others, it was a very significant change. And I think the high school is one example where the schedule had changed pretty significantly. I think those variables, that variable has set itself at this point. And the third was staff variables, you know, what staff had vacated positions either through retirement, resignation, or health choices. And that's the variable that, to this point, still remains rather fluid. As of the beginning of today, we still have one special ed teacher vacancy and ten ESP vacancies across the various levels of the district. So I do bring that up just to, you know, shed light on that variable as it relates to service delivery at this point. But, you know, with, with most of the variables set, teachers have moved forward, staff have moved forward to create schedules. And in the last week or so, they've been reaching out to parents to get their input on the schedules and how service delivery will look in each of these models, because obviously it'll look differently, whether it's hybrid or full remote. And we're going to be documenting those conversations and plans with what we call COVID plans, you know, using guidance that we've got from DESI. And those will be going out to parents, reflecting those conversations within the next week or so. So how does it look right now? I can go through both the hybrid and remote models, both at elementary and secondary. So starting with the hybrid model at the elementary level, we have both academic and related services are taking place across both settings, in person and remote. We have evaluations and special ed testing has resumed in the buildings. We have been encouraging our staff as much as they can to do special ed testing on Wednesdays and opposite cohort days. So for A days, can we get testing done on B cohort kids by bringing them to the building and vice versa? And encouraging that with our staff, we're trying to minimize the amount of time that they're taking out of class at this point while still trying to chip away at the backlog of testing that grew over the springtime when we weren't able to test. At the middle and high school level, in the hybrid model, very similarly, academic and related services are taking place both in person and remotely. We do feel confident that we're going to be able to deliver academic support classes for the entire year at this point, both at the middle school and high school levels. And again, testing has resumed at those levels as well. In the full remote model at the elementary level, we have a special educator and an ESP who are working on the academic service in that model. We have related service hooks, meaning speech, OT, or PT. So kids in the model, their neighborhood school are delivering those services. So if we have a student in the full remote model who, say, goes to Elm Street and gets food services, the Elm Street SLP is delivering those services in this model. We are doing special ed testing and evaluations when necessary for students in the full remote model. And those are taking place at town hall. So evaluators are setting up with parents and scheduling times. Parents are bringing the kids to town hall. And we did that so that we weren't bringing kids who had not been in the buildings regularly into the buildings and possibly exposing them to the cohorts who had been there. At the secondary level, we have a special educator at the middle school and high school level, who's delivering academic support classes at both of those levels, as well as targeted support. Again, related services are being provided by students' neighborhood schools. And again, testing taking place at town hall when necessary. So I'd say overall, we're in a much better place today than where we were several weeks ago. I will say we do have several rather unusual, maybe creative staffing situations. I think probably Mike Frashia cringes every time I come in his office these days to pitch him a creative staffing scenario. But that's going to be an ongoing issue. I think we have a number of slots to still fill. And I think the principals are working hard to fill the slots. I do want to acknowledge Mike, both Mike and Kathy Garven. Throughout this process, I've had a number of conversations with both of them, particularly about PPE. And the turnaround with PPE has been fantastic because it's been such a crucial element to special ed service in getting started. And with Kathy Garven, the number of conversations that she and I have had in the weeks leading up to school starting, really around how special ed service intersects with safety, she's been fantastic. And then we've created solutions together about how service can take place safely. So I do want to acknowledge her role in how special ed service has been, gotten up and running to this point in the year. I think those are largely the details I have for getting service up and running. I do have a couple of non-COVID. I do have a couple of non-COVID items that I can share with you, just cleaning up from last year. In the spring, we were supposed to have our mid-cycle review with state. That's been pushed back to this year, so sometime this year. And I'm working with DESI as to when that's going to be. We did plan a program evaluation, really to take place in the spring and possibly this fall, the VIP program at Boydin. But as of right now, we suspended that evaluation until things look a little bit more normal. And we continue to work with the Home Political Wanderers as they continue to take in students from around the state. And we work with the building principals and Christina Piney, our district coordinator, to make sure their needs are met as they enter the home. I think that's all I have, Dr. Now.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Quealy?
Kristin.
Yeah, so I know that in the high school, you're still working out what support looks like for second semester. I'm hoping that happens soon. But also wondering, the way the four-by-four schedule is, when you make changes for the second semester, is there a possibility that that would also impact classes in the first semester?
Want me to repeat that, Dr. Quealy, or did you hear that?
I heard most of it. Can you repeat it just so I'm sure?
Sure. Just that Kristin said that she knows that everybody's working on out the classes for the second semester and, you know, hopefully they'll be able to know that soon. But, and also using the four-by-four schedule, that where you're making those changes now to the second semester, will that impact the classes that they're already taking in the first semester?
Will the changes for second semester impact the classes they're taking for first semester?
Yes.
That's a good question.
Like, they're currently taking classes in the first semester, would it impact any type of change? So let's say the change for the second semester happens in two weeks, right, or three weeks. Then does that automatically, will they have a course that they're currently in that they would have to move? Or are the courses that they're in for the first semester stay as is?
If they're getting full year support in one semester...
Good question. I don't know. I think that's why we're taking our time to be thoughtful about the process. And I think we want to minimize that, you know, as much as possible. And possibly to have no changes. To tell you I know that exactly right now, I don't.
I think what you're thinking like is if they're taking math first semester right now, would they continue to finish out that math class for the first semester but not have to take it?
Well, my question is, if you're taking...
I believe so. I believe so. I think the gaps that we found in second semester aren't so large that they can't be addressed in second semester.
I don't think that's true, I'm sorry. If you have full year support being delivered in one semester and it's in the first semester now, how can you add more support in the second semester without shifting classes around?
So I think it's looking at what would they, you know, looking at what they would lose. Because obviously, if they have, the students have ACT support in the first semester, then they're going to get ACT support in the second semester. So something would have to give, like where an exploratory class give in place of an academic class. Because they have to take that academic class in order for the graduation requirements.
And to not fail school.
Possibly in second semester, yeah.
Okay. So you're looking at more how the electives would switch than their academic structure?
That's my understanding, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's very, very frustrating because that really affects what elective somebody can take and how their schedule is built. It's just really frustrating that this wasn't figured out differently beforehand. I know, I understand that it's really a lot. But, you know, for people who have academic support and it's not subject-based, you know, they really need that support all year. And it's unfortunate that that would affect them being able to take other courses.
Can you hear that, John?
I didn't get any of it. Sorry.
Sorry.
She's saying that it's frustrating because that it didn't happen sooner because the students that are not, their courses for first semester maybe just worked in their second semester for those that are getting, adding academic support to the second half of the year.
You lose electives.
That you're going to lose an elective.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. That's, I understand. And I think that's why we want to be thoughtful now and not commit details until we can minimize any impact like that in the second semester. But I think unfortunately, there may be some impact. But I think that's what may have to happen to deliver the service. Yeah, and this is limited to the high school, is what I understand.
Yep.
Okay, are there other questions? Sean?
Yeah, kind of a half-question and half-statement. I do want to first thank you and your entire student services staff. You guys have been given an almost insurmountable task. And, you know, the fact that you guys have made so much progress is great. And I'm very thankful for that and the work that especially the teachers are putting in each day, managing remote and in-person students and trying their best to fit things in. I'm very grateful for. And I guess my comment is that I would encourage the building principals, Mr. Frishia and whoever is in charge of hiring those additional positions, to really put that as a high priority. We've, you know, I've seen it personally in my family and in, you know, some of the circles that I've spoken with about people that feel like their students aren't being able to access everything they need because the personnel just isn't there. And, I mean, it really needs to be there. We are two weeks into school. You guys knew, you know, a month ago, realistically, who wasn't going to be in school. And, you know, I would love to see some movements, a bunch of hires. I know qualified people may not be available now. But just, you know, movement in that area. The teachers, I said at the start, are working so much in such a different way, so hard. I don't want anybody to burn out. I don't want anybody to be overworked either. So all the support that we can give them would be great.
I can answer some of that, then, John, you can hit that part. Some of them, I'm looking at you and trying to look at the camera at the same time. Unfortunately, some of the staff, we knew exactly how many staff we needed. Some of them, through family, family FMLA, left maybe a week before school started, two weeks before school started, some a couple of days before school started. Others, we had on books, ready to go, and then they left for another district. So maybe we needed an LTS for a maternity leave or for 12 weeks, FMLA. Had the person, but then another district opened up and offered a full-time, full-time LTS or not a maternity leave. So they left. We actually had somebody leave three weeks ago. Another somebody else who left for another district two weeks ago. So unfortunately, all the districts, a lot of these districts are in the same situation. We've posted, we've continued to post. As soon as one person writes and says that they're resigning and going to another position or they're leaving to stay home because they realize they have to take care of a family member or that they thought they could do it, but they have multiple kids at home. And unfortunately, it's just they can't do it. And obviously, the FMLA or the FFCRA childcare pay of two-thirds of their salary is not worth what they make. ESPs, unfortunately, they can't really take, they take FMLA, they can't get their, you know, they get sick time, but they only have 15 days. So they don't get 12 weeks, they just don't get paid. So some of them, yes, we've known they'd be able to take a yearly leave of absence and we filled all those positions. These are the positions that people are, that have left right before the school year started. And I know, I think, in other districts that are having the same thing. It's their, what we call our ESP is what other districts call instructional assistance. That is the highest need and that's exactly what we need and we continue to post for. John, I don't know if there's anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think I would echo what you're saying about, you know, folks taking positions and leaving. That's happened on a number of occasions. I recall hiring someone, you know, the Friday before Labor Day and she resigns the Tuesday after Labor Day. And that's happened on a number of occasions. We've also, we had a number of ESPs going into the year who had special ed licensure. And we've taken those ESPs and sort of reassigned them into teaching roles. So that's created vacancies at the ESP level. And so I think as we assessed where our voids were in special ed service, we had to sort of create positions. And we've created some positions that are part-time special ed teacher, part-time ESP. And as we've done that, we've sort of pulled from the ESP ranks and then it's created more vacancies. So, you know, it's frustrating, you know, the hiring process that we're going through. But I think building principals have made it a priority to fill their spots as quickly as they can. We've streamlined the process of onboarding as much as we can. But I think in hearing from my colleagues in different districts, it's a universal issue.
And the commissioner actually came out and asked the superintendent to call one another before they take somebody from one district to another because they found that that was happening as well. So we're hoping that, you know, we get calls as people leave.
Carrie.
This is more a comment and maybe directed to our wider audience, but it is absolutely a universal issue, the lack of personnel, particularly with regards to special ed. And I think it's important, I mean, it's absolutely our responsibility to fill these rules and we need to do it as soon as possible. But I think it's important for people to understand that in special education, then there are restrictions on numbers. So when, you know, the number of students on IEPs who can be in an inclusion class or the number of students who can be in a classroom before an ESP is needed to be added in. And you can add one student to a class and all of a sudden, you need to hire a full-time ESP where you didn't before. And so when you take that on top of the very restrictive numbers we have to maintain in classrooms for social distancing purposes, sometimes these needs can appear very quickly, just based on the numbers. And so I think it's, I just want people to understand that sometimes. It's not, it's not lack of foresight or planning. Things happen and then everything is just tighter this year when it comes to the numbers. But I do agree with my colleagues that, you know, obviously, we need to be providing students with their services and we need to be doing every single thing we can to get people in, while acknowledging that it's an uphill battle right now.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Dr. Quealy? Okay, thank you, Dr. Quealy, and thank you for the hard work. We understand that your job is just as challenging as just about everybody else that we've talked about and then some. So we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Yalda.
Okay, our next item is to reappoint a representative to the Walpole Media TV Committee. And thankfully, Kristin Syrek has been behaving herself and doing a great job for a year. We're hoping for the best. Kristin, are you interested in doing it for me?
I would love to do it. As much as I love the school committee, that committee's a little bit easier. It's not that as much.
Well, if that's the case, I think it's great to have an enthusiastic volunteer. So I would just take a motion to appoint Kristin again as our representative to the Walpole Media TV Committee.
Second.
We have a motion, I'm giving it to, a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mark Breen. And are there any questions? Anybody want to challenge Kristin to that role? Okay, if not, I'll take a vote and we don't have to do roll calls. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Thanks, Kristin. Thank you very much. Okay, that gets us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Nancy. Well, it's been enjoyable to see the children back to school, you know, since we shut those doors on, I think it was Friday on March 13th. It's been a long time without our students and we're thrilled to have them return to our classrooms as the principals echoed. I've really been impressed at how quickly the principals have been able to problem solve, especially on arrival dismissals. There's a huge difference between the first day and the second day, especially at Elm. I think the first day, we had it backed up to 27. The day after that, we, you know, Karen, Principal, you know, fine tuned. And we had Google Docs going when parents came up and it went into the main office. And we were able to get the traffic going. So like the traffic, we will face some stumbling blocks, but we'll continue to work together to problem solve and find solutions. We continue just to keep the school committee aware of, and the community, to follow the count rate and rate of confirmed COVID-19 cases in Walpole. I'm sure you all watched that. It was every Wednesday evening that it comes out and we kind of take a look, are we in the unshaded? You know, are we in the green, the yellow, or the red? And just to remind you that, you know, what does that mean? Unshaded is where you have fewer than five total cases in the past 14 days. And green is when you have the average daily cases per 100,000 is less than four. Yellow is when it's between four and eight. Again, these are average daily cases per 100,000. And then red is when you have average daily cases per 100,000 greater than eight. So we then, in the green, you know, consistently. And I think that as of, on 9/17, we had 11 positive tests during that two-week period, which kept us into the green. So on, yesterday, actually, 9/23, our average daily cases per 100,000 went to 4.4 and four to eight. So that's why we're in the yellow and it went just a little bit over to 4.4. So when we look at that then too, we obviously, because that might have some questions about, well, where are we? Are we going more restricted because we're in the yellow? What does that mean? What we have to do is, we're still going forward, we're still in the hybrid model. And what we do is we look at trends. And all of this is in consultation with our Board of Health. Because we need to see where these trends lie, you know. Is it school-related? Is it a nursing facility? Is it a group home? Is it, you know, a university in that particular town? And so we looked at that. So, for example, in talking with the Board of Health, six of the cases were, are tied to residents in a group home. So out of the cases that they looked at. And then another group, another four were asymptomatic college students that needed to be tested in order to continue on campus. So you look at those trends and those are not related to any of the, in the school system. So that's where we go. So we continue to look at that and they really look at, you have to accumulate three weeks of data. But like I said, once I get that, I'm usually down there on Wednesday afternoon well before 6 o'clock to find out, okay, where we are, what is the prediction? What do we look at? And the Board of Health is, you know, they've been dead on of where we lie. So I'll continue to keep you updated on those metrics. We did have one positive case last week at JMS and the protocol was put into place. There was the notification of the positive test on Friday afternoon. I have to commend Johnson Middle School, the administration, the nursing staff, the Board of Health. Close contacts were notified by that evening and communications to all families was able to go out that evening. And it was important to also maintain confidentiality. It just shows the importance of us keeping our seating charts and our attendance records because that really expedited the contact tracing, which is what they need. So the protocol, just to let everybody know of what we're doing, you know, moving forward, is that when the positive case is received by the Walpole Public Health Nurse via MAVEN, and if you don't know what MAVEN is, that's the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiological Network. And for MAVEN, so when there's a positive case that's received by our Walpole Public Health Nurse, under no circumstances can the individual self-report. It has to come through MAVEN. So once our Walpole Public Health Nurse communicates with that positive contact and then what she does is she alerts our head nurse, the Walpole Public Schools. And then the head nurse reaches out to the building nurse and the process of identifying close contact then begins. The close contacts are notified. The close contacts are notified and families receive notification of a positive case within the school and that all close contacts have been notified. So, and all those who need to quarantine have been advised and then will follow the DPH appropriate quarantine requirements and that the schools are adhering to the standards. So finally, after that, after they identify the close contacts, families are notified, the schools notified, that the Walpole Public Nurse still continues the investigation throughout this entire quarantine period for both the positive cases as well as all close contacts. They're closely monitored. They're continued, involve continuing contact with positive cases as well as close contacts through the entire quarantine period, just to ensure that they're being followed and it's being monitored. And then they get clearance from the public health nurse. So I really have to commend everybody on Friday afternoon. And then we're able to continue to put those protocols in place moving forward. In the world of technology, as you know, we're continuing to investigate, you know, variety. We do have technical issues primarily that tends to happen with Google Meet. I know a letter went out to staff and a letter will be going out to families just to let everybody know that we continue to work on that diligently, identify any underlying causes and work towards solutions to put, ensure that students and staff will have stable access. What, word is going out to parents. It just reminds them, there's a link in this letter of who they can go to for tech support at either the elementary or the secondary level. And then certain solutions that they need to try with their Chromebooks. And it shows them how to clear the browsing data and how to reset the Chrome to limit the number of tabs that are open on their Chromebook. There's some advice about headsets. There's some advice about using like the spotlight instead of the full grid view. So all that information is in the letter and they can actually click on and it will, it will show families how to do it along with some home networking tips as well. In the calendar, just to, just to bring to your attention, the Thanksgiving and winter breaks, both of those impact Cohort B. So in order to make sure that we balance out the cohort, so during the Thanksgiving week, that Monday, Tuesday, that will remain as Cohort A. They'll still attend the in-person. However, that week of the December break on the calendar, the 21st and 22nd, Cohort B will be in-person. That way it just evens it out for the families. So we'll make sure that that's up on the website and that our principals communicate that to the families. And then finally, something that's not COVID-related is the Fails Leach-Rajah New Scholarships. Please be advised that these scholarship applications, they'll be available October 1st through Thursday, October 29th. And the application can be found on the district website and also in the superintendent's office. And I believe there's a copy in your packet. And the awards will be to undergraduates at four-year accredited colleges and they will be eligible for the four years. And for people that may not know, it is a wonderful opportunity. The primary criteria for awarding the scholarships, the scholastic ability and reading character of the applicant. And it may include their participation in extracurricular activities in Walpole High School or other outside activities. And to be eligible, the student has to be a graduate of Walpole High School. But it's a great opportunity and I encourage, you know, graduates or coming graduates to apply. And I have a whole bunch of stuff in the middle school building project, but we'll wait till we get to that.
Okay. Are there questions so far for Dr. Goff? Okay, great. Then let's keep going to the amended policy, Bridget.
Sure. So the attached policy has been revised and requested for the Walpole Teachers Association. The WTA is being, is asking the school committee to review and approve the revisions. The one revision that they would like to put in the policy, the school committee policy for face coverings, and I have it highlighted in red, they are requesting that gaiters, bandanas, and masks with vents, holes, or mesh material are not allowed for students in grades pre-K through 12. And I know that you had asked for feedback, Mr. Buckley had asked for feedback from the principals. So that is just something that I wanted to give to you as a request for the Walpole Teachers Association.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mr.?
Yes, Sean.
I don't know which it is. But so, is the staff going to follow these guidelines as well? I noticed specifically says pre-K through 12 wouldn't, you know, most of it is kind of for everybody.
Yes, I'm assuming yes. I don't know if any of you of the staff, if you have any inclination in terms of, I know it said students, but I'm assuming staff would adopt it because it says in here, this is for everybody, this policy.
I think that's a good point, Sean. I don't know why we have, we can just say gaiters, bandanas, masks with vents, holes, or mesh material are not allowed, period. We could end it right there if we choose to go that route. I think for me, one of the things that's confusing is it did sound like the administrators have some concerns. Say, yeah, Kristin, that they're okay with gaiters, that some of them are. It came, so that's what, that's what has me confused about where we really stand. Carrie?
I'm making an assumption here and Dr. Goff, you can correct me, that this request is based on an idea that the gaiters, bandanas, and masks with vents, holes, or mesh material actually aren't as protective as two-ply masks?
Yes.
Which makes sense to me and I understand why staff would be concerned about that. And then I heard Principal Regerio talk about how quality of gaiters seems to be improving and you can get gaiters that are two-ply or have filters or et cetera. Because I had the same thought, like, how do we square the fact that our teachers are asking us for this with the fact that the administrators are having concerns? And I'm wondering if there's a middle ground of, you know, requiring maybe just two-ply face coverings or face coverings that have filters. So therefore you are encouraging good-quality, safe face coverings without eliminating comfortable options for students who might struggle with other types of face coverings. And I don't know if that's a possibility, but I feel like it's good to kind of have as much flexibility for students as we can while ensuring safety.
I just worry that parents went out and spent money on masks without their guidance and now we're going to be telling them that's not okay. So I, you know, given the fact the administration isn't even clear on this ask, I'm not comfortable voting for the change, given the fact that, I mean, people went shopping already for this. So for now, to tell people what they did is not acceptable and they weren't given enough notice, that worries me.
One, and another possibility too is if you have specific questions for the WTA, we could have a WTA representative or come to the next meeting or reach out to and answer, or answer some of the questions that you have before you make the decision. That's another option.
It's also the administration.
I don't think, I don't think any of us are real, I'm getting the sense, I know that I'm not comfortable voting it tonight. I think that, you know, ideally, we'd like to see the WTA and the administration on the same side. And I'm not, I just don't feel like there's been enough conversation about it. I think that Carrie brings up an interesting point that, you know, it may be that if it's a high-quality gaiter, that changes things a bit. So, yeah, I think we need a little bit more information here. I think it would be good for, before the next school committee meeting, for the administrators to share their point of view with the WTA. On the other hand, I can't, I mean, since this is a public meeting, I think we also should give credit to the WTA for all their cooperation and the fact that they're bringing this to us. I just don't think it's ready to get voted on this year.
I think it's also important if they have, if you have questions for the WTA, you know, to be able to, I don't know if we do through, through you, Nancy, if you don't, that they could send it to you and you could get it to Dave. If the school committee has specific questions, like the, like the specific layers or, you know, just specific questions, and they'll get feedback too from the administration as well.
And related to what Jen was saying, I don't feel like we can make a decision on a Thursday night and say, starting tomorrow, we're going to do this. I think we would put in a timeframe that says, you know, by this point. And I think, I think the spirit of this is all about student health. Well, not student health, but overall health of everybody in the community of the school district, so.
That's understandable.
So we'll bring this back when it's ready.
Right.
Okay. We're going to need an additional school committee meeting in October because when we scheduled last year, we had one meeting that was going to be before town meeting and it was one of those really short ones. First of all, we don't, we probably need a full committee meeting just because of the MSBA process and what we need to discuss. So we're looking at either October 8th or October 15th, both of which are Thursday nights. Bridget, do you have a preference of one over the other?
No. I think if we're looking at discussing especially the educational plan, I don't think, I always like sooner rather than later, just to get, just to get in, feedback and input at a workshop, just because we're going to need to do so many iterations of it before it's due in November. But really, 8th or 15th are pretty close together, so either or is my.
You just brought up a good point though, because we had talked about an additional school committee meeting and a workshop specific to the ed plan. Is that still?
I'd have to check, I'll have to check my schedule and see.
Okay.
But I know there was, there was a time in between, if you remember, it just seemed like a long time between from one school committee to another.
Right now, we have a meeting scheduled tonight and our next one was not scheduled until October 19th. So that's the big gap that you're remembering. And maybe, let's schedule the additional meeting for either the 8th or the 15th with the idea that there is the possibility that we're going to need a workshop to help do the educational plan.
Yeah, we'll definitely need a workshop.
I was just going to say, I think we should look at open house schedules too, because I'm pretty sure Fisher has, it's on the 8th. I don't know when the other schools do, but if there's, you know, if there are those dates.
But I'd like to prioritize, we'll prioritize that workshop so we can really dig down in the ed plan and get as much feedback as possible from the school committee.
Is there the possibility, sometimes we've had workshops prior to regular sessions, like starting earlier?
Double up on the same.
If, you know, if we can't find a second day because of open houses and everything else going on, that might be another option.
Yeah. Can somebody with a computer check whether there are open houses on October 8th or October 15th?
Phil, do you have your computer there? I can't get off of mine because it's running the school committee meeting.
Yeah, my computer booted, I just, you know, Mike and I can't hear a thing. So you'll have to just repeat. We, I mean, I don't, I just don't want people to think we're not engaged, can't hear anything, so.
Can you check your calendars to see regarding open houses? Because we want to schedule a school committee workshop or possibly another school committee meeting prior to the October 29th, because that's when the school committee.
Okay, so what day, you want me to tell you when all the open houses are?
Is there anything on the?
The 8th or the 15th.
Anything on the 8th or the 15th?
October, okay. 8th, there is nothing on our district board calendar. And 15th, right now, tentatively, there is parent-teacher conferences for Johnson on the 15th, but I'm not sure if.
They might be pushing that.
Okay.
Well, the 8th is.
That would get pushed, but.
I said the 8th is the workshop?
I'm seeing Elm and OPR on the 7th. Boydin is not on here. Middle school conference is on the 22nd. Elementary conference is later in the month. I don't see anything on those dates right now, but Elm isn't on here. I mean, Fisher's not on here.
I thought Fisher's.
Boydin's not on here.
Okay. Let's take it from the other point of view, except for Jen who might have conferences on the, or might have open house on the 8th. Does anybody have a preference for the 8th versus the 15th? So it sounds like if possible, Bridget, you would pick the 8th because it's sooner. And we can clarify that if there's no open house at Fisher, we'll do the 8th. And if there is, we'll do the 15th. Okay?
If the open house is video taped, she could watch it.
Okay. That's a good point. She's saying if the open house is videoed, she could watch the recording.
Okay.
Okay, so, does that mean we want to just put in the 8th right now?
Yeah.
I think we should. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Then that gets us to the next topic, which is the middle school building project.
Okay. I guess, if it's okay with the school committee, I just want to share just like two, a couple of slides from last night. Last night, we held our vision session, ours, it's at the community forum with members of our campus project management team, Tampa architects, and David Stevens from the Vista Design. And we'll be, if it hasn't been done already, they'll be posting the presentation along with the slides, the Google slides to the project's website, which is at the bottom of the school district's homepage. So really, what it focused on was taking a look at where we've been and where we're actually going. And also part of this focus, and give me one second while I share the screen. What we, what we really took, and I think that it's important to just make sure that we mentioned at school committee to you all this evening. And I know that many of you were able to listen to the community forum last night, is that looking at that yellow, the yellow piece about the scenarios, the decision-making, and when at some point, you know, when is the decision and the discussion of what are we doing in terms of just building a new middle school? Are we consolidating? And what goes into that decision-making process? And if you look over on the left-hand side of the screen, that's where we are now. We're in writing the educational program, which is about a 50 to 60-page document that really talks about what is the, what is our vision? What do we look at teaching and learning should look like for our children? But at the bottom, you can see that it's highlighted is that we do this preliminary evaluation of scenarios. And these are, this is not a decision made, we're looking at the options now. It's not really until you get to that middle piece where we do some short list options and then you make a decision about what that option would be. So we're into the discussion period, we need to continue those discussions. And when you're looking at that type of decision-making and looking at the possible scenarios, you generate these options for consideration. And the MSBA will require, you know, all of these different options of add, renno, and new school options. There's seven possible scenarios for Walpole. So you look at that, you explore the solutions, and the existing Burn Johnson sites are really deemed to be the only viable options by the time in terms of the site, but there'll be multiple conceptual options per scenario. And I also just want to mention, you know, you know, we're, that sometimes there's rumor that we're going to put the new middle school at the high school and build a new high school. That's not true. That's not happening. The MSBA invitation is specific to the deficiencies that were identified at Burn Middle School in a. in our statement of interest. But it also includes the study of a potential consolidation for, for the, to include both middle schools. So those are some of the scenarios that we're going, going to be discussing. And when you take, when you take a look at that, when you look at the screening process and it really, you have this criteria that you, against which you measure these options. And that usually is generally between 10 to 12 criteria that's developed based on the importance to a district and a town. And then you have a professional team that performs all the necessary research and engineering in order to provide our school building committee with data points for evaluation and rating. And these are some of the questions that you can see, then in the back, there's all these different categories in, in order to, and when people are able to give their feedback, it will, you can go green, yellow, red. So it ends up being a really nice chart to find out what the community appetite is. The screening process really results in narrowing to a short list of three to four options for even a more detailed study. The school building committee will seek input. And then you arrive at a preferred solution that's in the best interest of the town. And that's the solution that will progress to the schematic design. So I think, you know, what I'm putting out there is asking the school committee is to also be thinking, you know, what information do we want to gather in order to help us with this, you know, look at the decision-making processes, looking at these options? And you can see some of the questions, you know, that, that we are evaluating and that we'll need to evaluate in order to help narrow down our options on the short list. For the second part of the community forum, Chris Blesson, who's the architect from Tappé, David Stevens from Vista Design, they did a nice job to talk about what could be, and they took us through some visioning options, and they gathered feedback. And people were actually able to give their feedback via their phones, you know, in terms of what they liked from a design and what they didn't like in certain designs. And there were some great design patterns of 21st century schools that we were able to provide, provide feedback. So I just wanted to share that because I think with all this talking, sometimes you see the visual helps of how we go about that. Because this is something really that we should be talking about also as a school, as a school committee each time that, that we meet in order to keep the community included. And I know Mark, you know, you want to add something?
No, I think those, that slide does a good job of explaining where in this phase, this is the next phase. I think what people need to understand is that we're kind of moving along to having to make a decision. We've been talking about this for years now, and now we're within a matter of months of, of having to, of the community, the committees in the community come around to a decision as to what might be worth pursuing, so.
Jen?
I wanted to say that community input is so important. And what I really liked about the presentation last night was the way they allowed people, like you said, to electronically vote in. You know, so often decisions in town, people feel like they don't have a voice, and here you do. So we really encourage people to, you know, join these meetings and exercise your voice because this is a building that, you know, we can all contribute ideas to. And it's only going to be better if everybody speaks out and gives input. We got a lot of interesting ideas about, you know, natural light and things that we've seen in some of the newer schools. Different people work in different buildings, some that are new, so they may have ideas from that. It doesn't even have to be a school setting, but, you know, we're only going to be better by having more people weigh in on this. And that online, being able to rate your options, you know, real time in a meeting. I've never seen anything like that, and I was just so impressed.
Yeah, the electronic voting was the, that you're talking about was, was a great.
Yeah, and you got to write, the more so than just voting, you got to write out phrases.
And then writing how you, how you see.
Which was great.
So he's able to take all of that, and then that, that's even more feedback in terms of, because we're having to read that, read the staff piece. And we'll be doing that third staff piece next week on October 1st. But I agree, and not only are the slides will be up there, but it was videotaped as well. So people will be able to, to view the entire presentation.
Yeah, I think I would sort of combine what Jen and Mark are saying. I think that it was a great presentation last night. And it's, I think we want more people to view that presentation in the next couple of weeks because, as Mark was saying, we're moving to a decision-making time in terms of the education plan that's getting written and eventually the solution that we are going to support. And it, for the people that were there last night, they did get to put in their ideas. But Compass and Tappé and David Stevens all said that they will still take input. So it's not too late for people who missed it. We, when we did subcommittees, we talked about having PAC liaisons. And I think each of us should pick a school out of the four elementary schools and Danny O'Pheney and reestablish those connections and ask those people to engage their people also. Because I think it's a tremendous opportunity, but I don't think enough people know about it. And somehow, you know, the, the personal outreach might make a difference. But there's a website that people can go to, there's, the forum from last night is definitely worth looking at. Carrie?
Along those lines, I'm wondering if principals can send out the link to the recording in their next batch of e-notes.
That's a good idea. Yep, well, principals, send them one to the recording.
I think it needs a little bit of personal push to it too, you know? So if a message from the principal and a message from one of us would make a big difference. I think that another thing is we are going to have to decide whether we want to have one or two middle schools going forward. So it's not too soon for people to be sharing their thoughts on that topic as well. And in that case, I think it might be that they would be sharing it with us rather than with, with the building committee at this point. I also think that there's a question and answer section on the middle school building project website. Is that correct?
Yes, so people can ask questions. And at the end, if they view that presentation or just want to run through the slides, at the very end of the slide, you can, you can click it on and it'll show you where you can ask questions. It goes right to the middle school building project, and they will, Compass and Tappé will answer your questions along with us as well, if it's, if it's more community or building, or town-specific.
Okay. And then my last piece is, I was talking to Jen about this, but the Natick Middle School is going to open in December. And I, you know, I happen to be working there right at the moment, and it's so interesting to see. But that Compass is the project manager there, and I think we have an oppo, I know we have an opportunity to go over there and take a look at it. They've done some really interesting things with science labs. They're not finished yet, but it's an opportunity, and we might want to try to schedule that sometime in October as well. Other thoughts?
I sort of agree what you said about the personal touch maybe being something that we do need to focus on. It was a fantastic presentation, and especially David Stevens' part that he did about visioning. And the fact that we could interact with it was super helpful. But just the way he really led us on a path to get excited about brainstorming and the future and, you know, what this holds and how it binds together so many pieces of our town is really, you know, was wonderful. So, you know, but he said, or I think it was Tony that said that there was only 50 people at the highest point that were viewing it. So somewhere along the lines, people didn't understand, you know, how valuable this is, but also how exciting and really worthwhile of their time is. It's not, you know, something you're going to watch and not be enriched by. I mean, this is going to be something that's woven into the fabric of Walpole going forward.
You're right, it is exciting. It's a great opportunity.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? If not, subcommittees, are there any subcommittees that need to report? I don't think so. Any citizens that feel like commenting? That would be you, Patrick, if you're feeling like it. Okay, any warrants, donations, and minutes? Do you have warrants, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrant for the amounts listed in your packet. Those are warrant number 221011, 221011, 221012, and 221012.
So we have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, great.
I would also like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant for, as listed in the number in your packet. Warrant number is 2112PA.
And we have a motion by Sean, a second by Carrie. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Great. And a gift donation? Somebody want to take that?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the following gift to Johnson Middle School from September 18th. Bay State Textiles Recycling in the amount of $29.
Second, we have a motion by Carrie, a second by Kristen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Great. And we have some minutes?
Will you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the September 9th, 2020 school committee MSBA subcommittee meeting minutes?
We have a motion by Bill, a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0.
Will you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the September 10th, 2020 school committee regular meeting minutes? Second.
Again, we have a motion by Bill, a second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. And that's it? You're up, Mark.
I would like to make a motion for a jury.
A motion by Jen, I mean, a motion by Mark, a second by Jen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.